Order of the January 12th, 2022 Planning Commission Public Hearing. My name is Jack Wall and I'm the Chairman of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. Before we get started, Commissioner Graham is not in attendance today. He is out. So, but, so really, before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Costin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Horsley. Please stand.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this glorious day. God, we thank you for the many blessings and benefits that you have bestowed upon us. Now, God, as we come to look after the business of the city, God, we pray that you would grant us of your wisdom and your knowledge and your understanding, oh God, that you would lead us in the right directions. Bless those who are assembled. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've asked Mr. Redmond to introduce the members of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start on this side, per usual. The lady in the blue mask is Kay Wilson. She is a deputy city attorney. She handles a whole bunch of stuff, including those items that come under the Department of Planning and Community Development. Seated next to her is our newest member. That is Holly Quayor. She replaced a fellow named Mike Edman, who used to serve here for eight years. She is a consultant and she serves at large. Also serving at large is that handsome man next to her. That's John Costin. John is a retired fire captain. This is Robin Klein. Robin represents the Centerville District and Robin is a social worker. My name's Dave Redmond. I'm a commercial real estate broker and I represent the Bayside District. That is Donald Horsley. Mr. Horsley is a farmer and he serves at large. Seated him, seated next to him and in the center of your view there is Jack Wall. Jack represents the Rose Hall District. He is an engineer and this is his first meeting as our chairman, so it's his first day on the job. Let's all go easy on him. Next to him is George Alcaraz. George represents the Beast, I mean, we all represent these districts for now, but who knows coming forward. George represents the Beach District for now. George is a contractor. He's a business owner. He's a restaurant developer and entrepreneur. He plans events. He does a lot of things, but he represents the Beach District and this is his first day as our vice chairman. So congratulations to both of you. The lady seated next to George is a prior chairman of the Planning Commission. That's Dee Oliver. She also has a whole lot of jobs. She's in the restaurant business and she's in the funeral business and she's an author and she does a whole bunch of different stuff. She, did I say you serve at large?
No, but I do.
Dee serves at large. Okay.
Thank you.
The fellow next to her is David Weiner. David is a, is another former chairman. Seems like everybody's been chairman. And they were both very good at it, by the way. Dave represents the Kempsville District. He is a, and he is a contractor in the commercial building industry. Whitney Graham is not here today. He unfortunately got ill. And he represents the Lynnhaven District when he is here and he is in the development business and does a number of things in that. David Bradley is a retired budget director for the city. He represents the Princess Anne District. And as we start to go around the side here, we'll get to the staff. Bobby Tahan is the planning director. He is well-served by a very capable staff and Bobby's going to take a minute and introduce his folks.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Clerk in your day, we have Nicole Garrido and Pam Samle. The planning administration staff, we have Carolyn Smith, our planning administrator, Wadao, the current planning evaluation coordinator, Marshall Coleman, as well as a new employee, Madison Harris, who's a new planning technician with us, Michael McKenney, Elizabeth Noack, as well as a new zoning inspector who's helping us as well, Levi Luckenbach, who I did not introduce earlier. We also have Hank Morrison, who is, who is now, who was just recently promoted from his planner two position to a planner three position. So we're glad we're able to do that as well. And also our new zoning administrator, Ms. Hannah Sabo is here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Tahan, and congratulations and welcome to those new folks and those folks who got promoted on staff. We thank you for your work, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Redmond. Next, I've asked staff to describe the rules and order of business for today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Virginia Beach Planning Commission takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. We request that if you have a cellphone, to either silence it or turn it off. The order of the, of business for this public hearing, withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the Planning Commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendation. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Today, we will have both in-person speakers and speakers participating via WebEx. When an agenda item has been called, we will recognize the applicant or their representative first. Following the applicant or their representative, in-person speakers will be called next and then the speakers participating via WebEx. Speakers in support or opposition of an agenda item will have three minutes to speak unless they are solely representing a large group such as a civic league or homeowners association, in which case they will have 10 minutes. For WebEx speakers, once your name is called, please pause for two to three seconds to begin to ensure the commissioners hear your complete remarks. As only one audio feed can be opened at a time, do not ask, can you hear me, as you will not be able to hear a response. If a speaker does not respond or if a technical issue occurs which renders the comments unintelligible, we will move on to the next speaker or the next order of business. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove an application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope that your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order of business is the consideration of requests to withdraw or defer an item. Please come forward if you have an item to be deferred. Seeing none? Please come forward if you have an item to be withdrawn. Okay, with that, the next order of business is the consent agenda and I'm going to turn that over to Vice Chair to run that portion of the, the meeting.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Wall. Just bear with me. I'll get through this. I'll get you all through it. Today, we have 12 items on the consent agenda and I'm going to go right to it. Items one and two is our first, two agenda items and I'm going to read each one and then call up, I guess we have the city rep that's going to be speaking about this. Item one, an ordinance to amend section 1301 and 1303 of the city zoning ordinance in regard to historic and cultural districts, adding historic and cultural district design guidelines and staff exceptions. Item two, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan 2016 with the addition of the Virginia Beach Historic and Cultural District Design Guidelines from November 2021 and revisions to the comprehensive plan 2016 in regard there, too. And at this moment, I'd like to call Representative of the City, Mr. Reed, to come up. Mr. Reed, could you just state your name for the record, please?
Mark Reed, Historic Preservation Planner for the city. Good afternoon, Chairman Wall, members of Planning Commission. As noted, we have two agenda items bringing forward to you today relative to the historic and cultural district design guidelines that were presented to you at the November 2021 meeting. Agenda item one is an ordinance to amend section 1301 and 1303 of the city zoning ordinance in regard to the historic and cultural districts. Proposed amendments will add references to the design guidelines and make additional adjustments, including staff review exceptions, to better align with the design guidelines' recommendations. Agenda item number two is an ordinance to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan with the addition of the November 2021 Virginia Beach Historic and Cultural District Design Guidelines and associated revisions. The section of the comprehensive plan that is proposed to be amended is the reference handbook. The ordinance proposes to add historic and cultural districts' design guidelines under the Special Area Development Guidelines Chapter. This amendment includes four descriptive paragraphs for the design guidelines. As part of this amendment, it is recommended that the historic property section of the reference handbook, under the Special Purpose Guidelines Chapter, be deleted in its entirety so as not to duplicate or conflict with the 2021 design guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition for these two items to be on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. I'll move on to item number three, Cecilia Patterson, Shambord Commons, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. Address is 328 North Great Neck Road, Suite 103, in the Beach District. And Ms. Dee Oliver will be speaking.
Yeah, that happens.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that happens.
Is the, is the representative for the item?
Nick.
Come forward, please.
Was it sure you wanted?
Just bear with me. I'm going to get this.
Hello, how are you?
How are you doing?
Do you need me to take this off?
It's up to you.
Cecilia Marie Patterson.
Are the conditions acceptable that's been presented to you?
Yes, sir.
They are? Okay. And that's it?
You're good.
That's good.
Is there any opposition to the item that's before?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any opposition for this item?
To be placed on the consent agenda.
To be placed on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none? If I can ask Ms. Oliver to speak on.
Absolutely. This is an application for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup known as microblading. This operation will occur with an existing 1,480 square foot salon in the Shambord Commons Shopping Center. This property is Zoned B2. The proposed tattoo parlor will have two tattoo artists and the typical hours of operation are going to be 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Tuesday through Friday. There'll be no exterior changes to the building or to the existing signage. There are no other tattoo parlors within 600 feet of this location. This use will be compatible with other existing commercial businesses within the Shambord Commons Shopping Center and along the section of North Great Neck Road. The staff recommends approval of this application, subject to the conditions listed below, and the removal of condition number two has been deleted from the application. There is no opposition and therefore we've placed this on the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Mr. Rock, just for one clarity, the applicant is performing not just microblading but regular tattooing at the, at the location.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Did it say that?
It was, it was clarified in the future.
Oh, okay.
I apologize, Ms. Oliver.
Sorry. That's all right.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Move on to the next item. Items number four and five. It's Watson Real Estate LLC, Southern Conference of the United Church of Christ, conditional use permit for animal hospital and, and commercial kennel at 2497 North Landing Road. Sir, if you could state your name?
Sure will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Alcaraz, members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Billy Garrington, on behalf of the applicant. Applicant in this case is Watson Real Estate LLC. Property is 2497 North Landing Road. Mr. Chairman, there are two requests here, both in the same building, for the animal hospital and the commercial kennel. There are a total of 21 conditions, seven conditions at a part of the hospital and 14 conditions with a commercial kennel. We're in total agreement with all those conditions. We thank you for agreeing to place this on the consent agenda. We also have met with the city's historical and review board and they were on board with us also, so we thank you very much for placing this on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Garrington. Is there any opposition to the, this item with being on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you. Move on to item number seven.
Hold on.
Oh, sir.
He's going to read that to the record. Mr. Bradley.
Mr. Bradley, do you mind reading that?
I'll be glad to. The applicant is requesting conditional use permits for an animal hospital and a commercial kennel in order to construct a 12,000 square foot veterinary practice and boarding facility on this 2.87 acre site, Zoned AG2 Agricultural Zoning District and within the courthouse Historic and Cultural Districts. The proposal was considered by the Historic Review Board and received a certificate of appropriateness on December 15th, 2021. It was also presented to the Transition Area and Inter-Facility Traffic Area Citizens Advisory Committee on October 1st, 2020, and no objections were raised. Since planning staff has recommended this, subject to conditions that are listed in the report, and there's no opposition, the Planning Commission is recommending putting this on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Red. All right, we'll move on to the next agenda. Item number seven, Metro Towing Company. It's a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard at 1194 Bell's Road in the Beach District. Is there a representative for this item? Come forward. Hi, can you state your name for the record, please?
Stephen Sullivan.
Thank you. Are you accepting all the conditions?
Yes, sir. Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any opposition to this being on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, I asked Mr. Weiner to please speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. This is a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a bulk storage yard on the northwest corner of South Burnick Road and Bell's Road to store vehicles for towing, for a towing business, Metro Towing Company. The tow lot will occupy the eastern half of the three-quarter acre parcel. The remaining western half is occupied by a contractor's storage yard for the storage construction vehicles and materials that was approved in 1985. The applicant estimates that there are up to 30 vehicles to be stored on the site. As the current use of the contractor's storage yard has existed on the site since 1975, it does not meet the current regulations of a bulk storage yard and lacks the fencing and landscaping requirements. The application will serve to bring the property into conformance with the current standards as well as authorize use of portion of the site for the towed vehicles. We recommend approval and put this on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner.
Sure.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is item number 10. Excuse me for pronouncing this wrong. If I do, I have a feeling I will. Sweeney Kumar Pradham Paspolata Pradhim for modification of proffers along Horse Pasture Road between 1521 Taylor Farm Road and 26, and 2617 Horse Pasture Road on the Rose Hall District. Is there a representative for this item?
Who is it? John? John who? Okay. Sandow. Okay, calling John Sandow as the applicant for this agenda item number seven. Mr. Sandow, if you would wait two to three seconds and then state your name for the record and let us know if you agree with the conditions as applied to your application.
Hi, my name is John Sandow and we do accept the conditions. Thank you.
Hey, Madam, Madam Clerk, for the record, are there?
There are no, no other speakers for this?
Well, they're under condition. It's proffers.
Oh. For number seven? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
This is number 10.
Mr. Sandow, please, please excuse me. For clarification's sake, you're representing?
They, they offer the proffers.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is there any opposition for this item to be on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Ms. Klein, may you speak on this, please?
The applicant seeks a modification of proffers to amend subsection D of proffer one for only this property to allow the construction of a 16,714 square foot office warehouse building. The request was deferred at the November 10th, 2021 Planning Commission hearing at the applicant's request in order to revise the proposal to address comments received from concerned neighbors. Since the deferral, the applicant submitted revised proffers and conceptual exhibit for review. The revised exhibit shows the building setback of, of the eastern side yard increases to 30 feet compared to the 15-foot setback that was originally proposed. Staff updated the report accordingly and based on their recommendations, we placed the item on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. The next consent item is item number 11, Mitch B. Tattoos LLC, doing business Grayscale Tattoo Gallery at the Southern Star Commons LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 20, at 265 Jersey Avenue, Suite 106, in the Bayside District. Is there a representative present?
Yes, sir. My name is Mitchell Bear.
May you state?
April Bear.
All right, do you accept all the conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. You may sit down.
Thank you.
Having said that, Mr. Redmond, if you could read this.
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. This is an application of Mitch B. Tattoos LLC, doing business as Grayscale Tattoo Gallery. This is in a property on Witch Duck Road, as you can see, near its intersection with Virginia Beach Boulevard. The applicant is requesting to operate a tattoo parlor within an existing shopping center space of 1,789 square feet. The property is Zoned B2 Community Business District and it's located within, within the Pembroke Strategic Growth Area. Three tattoo artists will ultimately work in the space. Each one will see no more than one client at a time, so clientele that would be there would be restricted to three patrons at any time. There won't be any significant changes to the site other than to the signage, where that Ford Lee sign that you see will be replaced with the name of the business, consistent with just about anybody else's trade dress. The, the center itself is a little tight on parking. The reason it's tight on parking is because some time ago, the property owner and the city reached an agreement to reduce the size of that property to accommodate the widening of Witch Duck Road, which has been an enormous benefit to Witch Duck Road, if you haven't been there in some time. So that was certainly very helpful. This is a fairly common kind of application. It has a number of other considerations that are outside our purview, like health department considerations. The staff felt it was appropriate in this spot. We are unaware of any opposition to the application. The commission therefore places it on consent. Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz.
All right, Ms. Redmond, I did forget to ask, is there any opposition here today for this to be on consent? Okay, thank you. I'll go on to item number 12, I'm sorry, 13, Envision Studio Incorporated, Woodway Knob LLC, conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor at 6361 Indian River Road, Suite 107, in the Centerville District. Is there a representative for this item? Hi. If you could each state your name?
Kristen Kennedy.
John Barry.
Thank you. Are you accepting the conditions that's been brought to you?
We are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Klein, if you could. May, let me ask her a question, because I keep forgetting. Is there any opposition for this application? Ms. Klein, may I?
Okay. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor. The operation will occur within an existing 2,250 square foot unit in the Kings Creek Shops Shopping Center. The site is located along Indian River Road and is Zoned B2 Community Business District. The typical hours of operation will be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. There are currently two employees, but the applicant will rent out booth space to up to six tattoo artists. No exterior changes are proposed to the building and there are no other tattoo parlors within 600 feet of this location. Staff found that the application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Land use policies for the military highway corridor suburban focus area recommends approval of this application and we placed it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. The next item on the consent agenda is number 14, Aaron Newton at Landstown Commons in the, for a tattoo parlor at 3312 Prince Anne Road, Prince Anne District. Representative, please come forward. This is the virtual.
This is virtual? What's your? I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Yes, she is.
Newlin? Calling Michael Newlin, the applicant or representative for agenda item number 14. Mr. Newlin, if you will wait two to three seconds, please state your name and indicate if the conditions are acceptable as applied to your application.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Michael Newlin, representing the BB Nspaw, and we accept the conditions.
Thank you. Is there any opposition for this to be on the consent agenda? All right, Mr. Reed.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor specifically for the application of permanent makeup known as microblading. The operation will occur within an existing salon in the Landstown Commons Shopping Center. The property is Zoned B2 Community Business. The proposed tattoo parlor will have one employee. The typical hours of operation will be 8:00 to 8:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Fri- Friday. No exterior changes to the building or to the existing signage are proposed. There are no other tattoo, tattoo parlors within 600 feet of this location. Planning staff has recommended this for approval and here are no opposition. The Planning Commission is recommending putting it on the consent agenda.
Thank you. All right, the Planning Commission also places the following applications for a conditional use permit for short-term rental on the consent agenda as they meet the applicable requirements for section 24 point, 241.2 of the zoning ordinance. Staff and Planning Commission supports the applications and there are no speakers signed up to the comments.
For?
For comments.
Right. 15 and 16.
For 15 and 16. And 15 is Todd Swegart for a short-term rental at 505 19th Street in the Beach District.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And number, what's the last one? 16?
16, yeah.
And 16 is Ralph Brian Slope at, for a conditional use permit for a short-term rental at 3315, 15th Street in the Beach District.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. Do I have a motion to, to approve these consents, the items on the consent agenda?
Oh. Make a motion?
To approve.
To approve consent item number one, two, three, four, five, seven, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16.
Thank you. Is there, is there a second? Thank you. Yes, yes. Okay, I hearing a second. Are there planning commissioners abstaining on these items? Mr. Redmond?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, to be clear, I'm going to vote in support of the, of the consent agenda, but I want to be clear that I am specifically abstaining from the short-term rental applications. I have a letter on file with the city attorney's office. I have a client in the travel industry and that prevents me from voting on the, on the short-term rental applications individually or any of the ordinances or ordinance amendments and I, so I refrain from those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I heard the motion by Mr. Alcaraz. Who was the second? Mr. Horsley. Thank you.
A second by Mr. Horsley?
Thank you. Vote is open. By recorded vote of 10 in favor and zero against, agenda items one, two, three, four, and five, seven, 10, 11, 13, and 14 have been recommended for approval. Agenda items number 15 and 16, by recorded vote of 10, 10, nine in favor, zero against, with one abstention, are recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's the conclusion of the consent agenda. The next order of business is the regular agenda. We're going to pause for a few, for a minute and anybody that, that wants to, to leave at this point, you know, feel, feel free. So we're going to take a, a brief pause.
Marshall, the only two people that I'm aware of.
Yeah, it's not.
For virtual are Linda Baldwin and Mr. White.
Can we finalize yours?
Mr. White for application number 18. Mr. White for application number 18. I had no idea. Thank you.
Okay. The, the next, are we ready to move on to the regular agenda?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next order of business is the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, are we ready for the first item?
Yes, we are. Mr. Redon just gave me some handouts for you related to this one, so I'm going to pass them along. Okay. Agenda item number 6, Pups and Pints LLC, an application for a conditional use permit craft brewery on property located at 2413 London Bridge Road in the Princess Anne District.
Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, Eddie Redon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Pups and Pints LLC. Before I get into the presentation, I want to, as I talked to Ms. Wilson earlier, when we filed the application, my client, two owners, Alex, excuse me, Alex Lawson or Alexandria Lawson and Christina Sims, during the pendency of the application, there's a third Virginia Beach citizen and woman, businesswoman in Virginia Beach, Andrea Pafides, that has joined their ownership. So there, I will revise the disclosure between now and city council to include Ms. Pafides. Also, let me welcome Ms. Quayar. Thank you for volunteering your time and your service to the city. We really appreciate it. The property that we're here to talk about is a 3.34-acre parcel that is Zoned Unconditional B2. That is general commercial district. Parcel is located on the south side of London Bridge Road as it is presently configured. And also, as London Bridge Road was originally aligned, it actually bisected the property, and on the plan, you see this unimproved right-of-way. That is where London Bridge Road used to be. The property has been, has been Zoned B2 since prior to, as the chairman mentioned in the informal, the residential that has been developed since that time that surrounds it. The, this is solely, solely an application for a craft brewery to be operated within the, a portion of the existing building on this 3.34-acre site, and it will be operated in conjunction with a restaurant and a membership-only doggy daycare business. Now, that business will have no overnight boarding of dogs. The restaurant and the doggy daycare, which our ordinance classifies as an eating and drinking establishment, in the case of the restaurant, and a kennel, in the case of the doggy daycare, are by right uses on this B2-Zoned property. The doggy daycare business is a membership-only business. It's not open to the public, you know, which you have to bring your, your dog there, have the dog viewed, and time spent with the owners of the business to make sure the dog is friendly with others, let's say. So it's not just something somebody can show up and drop their dog off, but it's a, but the use is by right. It's technically called a kennel, but as Wa mentioned this morning, there's no boarding of, of animals in the facility. It will, however, be climate-controlled, and it will be soundproofed. The, excuse me, the applicants did not have to put all this information out there. They could just apply it for a craft brewery, but they want to be totally transparent with everyone and put this in there from day one. And in discussions with the neighbors, they met with the neighbors, they have actually made changes to the plan to try to, you know, lessen anybody's concerns to the greatest degree that they could do so. As Wa also mentioned this morning, this is an adaptive reuse of a building and a site that were developed decades ago. It was originally, I believe, it was originally a equipment rental facility. I know it was. I don't, I don't know if there was something there before that. And then it was a garden center for many years, and actually, it's been vacant for quite a few years. This involves, this proposal involve a major renovation and refurbishing of the existing building. We won't be adding any impervious surface to the site. You have elevations of the building as it will look when it's completed. You also have a site layout, which you all reviewed this morning, and staff has extensively reviewed. The existing parking areas will be, some areas need some patching. They'll be patched, they'll be resealed, coated, and then they'll be restriped. There was an excellent discussion this morning during the informal about the fact that this is a nine-to-five craft brewery operation. It is a small craft brewery, three-to-five barrel brew house is what it, is what the brewmaster characterizes it. We're not anticipating exporting product. It's not Anheuser-Busch, it's not Miller. It's just a small craft brewery. They'll be brewing for their own business there on the site. All of the material that's used in the brewing will be brought in on the left side of the building, where there will be a gated entrance to that side, to where there is parking in the back as well. That's only for employees, not for the public, and it's where the deliveries will take place, again, during the nine-to-five business day. And the materials used in brewing will be stored inside the building. When the materials are spent, spent greens, spent hops, they will also be in the building but for a very short period of time. There's a great demand in the agricultural community for those spent greens, spent hops. I certainly know some farmers just down the street on London Bridge Road who farm, our farm, have for years, that love to have the material. I don't think, and they're confident, as other craft brewers can tell you, that they will have a ready market to take that off their hands promptly, and they're, they're obviously well-located, close to a lot of agricultural operations. The, the site is existing, has existing fencing that's been there for decades around it. Most of the fencing has been consumed, or it's just greenery and natural areas all around the fencing. We're obviously not taking that fencing down. We will be adding our own fencing inside, inside the site, which is shown on the, on the plans, but the existing fencing on the exterior remain. There are a few properties to our west that don't have a fence, and we will be putting up a fence, and, and they're cooperative and happy. They want a gate so they can get through and come in, but there, there will be fencing and additional landscaping added to the already, you know, natural areas around the property that buffer the property. Excuse me. The, as I said, the, not that it's part of this application, but the kennel or the doggy daycare will be heated, air-conditioned, and its entrance is on the west side of the building. There are 14 conditions that have been recommended by staff with this application, all of which are acceptable to my clients. The one about parking that you all discussed this morning, at the entrance, and I mentioned this to, to Rick, Strawberry Road as it comes in, it may be, I'm not sure the distance, but it may be too close, hopefully it is, to London Bridge Road, but there should be no parking allowed anywhere between our entrance and London Bridge Road. We are happy to put up, not only at the entrance, but in the building, and, you know, let our, to let any, any customers know that they're not to park in the neighborhood. There is far more parking on here than is likely to be needed. We hope maybe not, but over time. But there is also room to add parking, and there's ability to do special event parking in the case that they have some fundraiser, and they can also do valet parking if that should ever be something that came about. So we are totally in agreement with the condition that our, our customers and clients not be able to park in the neighboring residential areas. It's not a problem, and we will do our, my clients will do their best to make sure that their clients and customers are aware that parking in the neighborhood is not permitted for the business because they have a large site and they have more than, well, well above the required parking. In fact, that's one of the conditions that you all are aware of and talked about this morning. We got a, have a number of letters of support, which you all have gotten copies of, and there are a number of people who have come today in support of the application. I'd like to ask those people in attendance today who are in support of the Pups and Pints application to please stand and be recognized. Thank you all for coming very much. I'll conclude, I do represent Commonwealth Brewery over on Pleasure House Road, and we all know there are a lot of very nice small craft breweries, and Commonwealth's a lot bigger than this one's going to be, in residential areas, that are very well appreciated by those residential areas. And we, we certainly hope and believe that as they become good neighbors to the people who are already in the houses around them, that the people who live there will use it as a gathering place, like the Chesapeake Beach Civic League uses Commonwealth as their gathering place. So it's, it's a, they've been trying to be respectful at all times to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Redon, I appreciate it. Are there any questions for the applicant?
I've got a couple.
Ms. Oliver.
Hey. Just, I, I just want to make sure I'm clear on how this, how the two entities.
Work together.
Work together. So I went through your letters, and it, the letters refer to how great it'll be to go to the brewery, have a drink, and bring their dogs after being at work all day. So is it a dog park or is it a kennel? Because you referred to that the dogs coming would be sort of regular customers of a daycare kennel, but the letters make reference to dog park and going to the restaurant and bringing their dogs. So I'm just.
It can be, I mean, it's a very good question, Ms. Oliver. It can, it either. What, it's the daycare, the folks who, who they keep the dogs during the day, someone may drop off their dogs, you know, and our dog, and then come afterward to pick the dog up and sit around and have a beer. Obviously, with, with the restaurant and with the outdoor seating area, people can come who aren't members and bring their dog on a leash and, you know, can sit outside and eat, have a beer, and have their dog on a leash, but the dog's not going to be supervised by or placed in the, the daycare.
Okay. That, that was my question, because in the letter, some of them make reference to coming, bringing my dog, taking it to the park. So I was just trying to see if the dog park and the dog kennel were.
They're not separate at all. The, the dog park is only for, used by the, by the members who are of the daycare or the kennel, exactly. They're not for the general public's use. That's exactly right.
And the other thing I noticed on your amenity plan example sheet.
I tried to give a bigger, bigger one than was.
It was very nice. You have a movie screen.
Right.
So, and then we have on recommended condition number three, the use of amplified sound outdoors shall be prohibited. So I assume the movie screen is outside because it looks like one of the inflatable ones.
Right. The idea there is you can have a, as, as is the existence, say, with Buffalo Wild Wings and other places, you, you can have a screen so you can watch a game, for instance, but there's no sound. That's exactly right. There was, there will be no amplified sound, no sound from anything that is shown on the, on the screen.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. You have to answer any of the questions?
Anyone else? Ms. Quayar?
Yes, I have a question. Has the Civic League for this community taken a position on the brewery?
I'm not aware as to whether there is a Civic League for either the community that the entrance is on the east side or the, the street that's on the west side. The meeting that was held, all of the joiners have been, and were notified, and the meeting was many weeks ago. So I, but I'm not aware of a Civic League that was, that's involved.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Redon. Madam Clerk, if you could call the first speaker?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, we have a total of five speakers, all in person. Dolores Pafides, and I probably said that wrong, I'm very sorry. Dolores Pafides.
My apologies.
Sorry. To be followed by Lisa Irwin.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen.
Before you get started, can you, can you state your name for the record?
Yeah. Dolores Pafides.
I was in the clothes, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I am here in support of the brewery and the dog park. I think Virginia Beach doesn't, well, they definitely don't have anything like this. I have been to other facilities like this in Florida and California. It's a beautiful, beautiful environment for your pets. It actually even helps the pets with their behaviors and such, because when pets are around other pets a lot, it does calm them down, helps them out. It's just something that Virginia Beach doesn't have, and I think that this facility would really make Virginia Beach a very pet-friendly community, which is, I think, lacking right now in our community. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you approve it. It's going to be a beautiful, beautiful facility. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Irwin, followed by Brian Irvine.
Oh, please state your name for the record.
Lisa Irwin, and I'm a property owner to the west of the proposed site.
Okay.
Just want to say, to allow craft brewery to operate on a parcel that is surrounded by residential property, an elementary school, and neighborhood parks is not keeping with the policies and goals supporting and sustaining great neighborhoods. It poses a negative impact on the safety, aesthetic, suburban character, and economic value of our stable neighborhood. Surrounded solely by homes and an outdoor recreation facilities, it will severely compromise the safety, quietude, and tranquility of our homes and neighborhoods. The drainage and utility easement provide an open access to Middle Oak Plantation Neighborhood Park and adjoining neighborhoods, no doubt inviting unwanted pedestrian traffic. The adjoining residential property, home to young children, and neighborhood parks should not be subject to the traffic, sound, sight, and smell of a brewery. If approved, this will be the seventh brewery within two-and-a-half-mile radius, and the only one in the neighborhood with eight adjoining homes. Strawberry Road, a neighborhood road that is used for Strawberry Elementary School, 678 students, pedestrian traffic, and access to neighborhood parks. The pedestrian, or the proposed entrance is less than a quarter of a mile of the elementary zone, and three neighborhood parks that are often used for children's sport practices and other outside activities. Strawberry Road has no shoulder, no sidewalk, it's not fully lit, and is already plagued with dangerous drivers. The neighborhood roads are already dangerously overutilized by people cutting through the main, to the main arterial roads. Denotees potentially impaired drivers on our neighborhood streets, near neighborhood parks, and our elementary school is not complimentary to our great neighborhood and amenities they have to offer. The recommended conditions, hours of operation for the brewery are 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. daily. It is assumed the brewery will be serving beer from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That's not safe nor okay in such close proximity to a school zone or our neighborhoods. You're asking us to support three distinct business models combined into one, all very different regulations, all posing their own issues in residential areas, with a combined business hours of 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week, assured to disrupt the quietude and tranquility of our homes and private property. This is not compatible with surrounding neighborhood. It poses significant safety issues, and is especially disrupted to those families with small and school-aged children or adults that have jobs that work early hours. As part of the proposal for a craft brewery as an enclosed off-leash.
I appreciate it, but the red light's on, and maybe I should have warned you that before, but I appreciate your comments. Are there any questions for Mr. Irwin?
Could you show us where you take the pointer there on the podium and show us where you live?
Is this one the pointer?
Yeah.
Is there no, no fence or anything?
No, yes, there is. Yeah, there is, yes.
Yeah, I can't do that.
We live right here. We live right here in this property.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So just to clarify, are you, you know that the, the restaurant part of the brewery and the kennel are by right?
Yes.
So it's just the manufacturing of the beer is what we're hearing?
The safety in the neighborhood, and the fact that the dog park is not 100 feet from the property lines at all. Outside activities will be in our backyard and where our children play in the park, with very clear visual from the park to the back of the brewery.
So are you concerned about the safety of the children with the dogs?
No. I'm concerned basically with the safety of impaired drivers coming in and out of Strawberry Road, going, potentially cutting through our neighborhoods, and they will do that because they do. Even anybody north on London Bridge Road going back towards like another Castleton neighborhood. neighborhood will not be going back out on London Bridge Road after having a beer or two. They're going to cut through the neighborhoods.
So, but if this was a restaurant without the manufacturing of beer, they would still be serving alcohol, and it still would be a by-right use. So, I'm just, I...
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Okay, I just want to make...
I'm not sure that a restaurant would pose as much of a, like, sit and have more than one drink. It's a little bit different atmosphere than a tasting room in a place you manufacture beer, inside and out.
Right.
When you plan, probably would plan to stay there a little bit longer when you can bring your pet and not have to worry about getting home to letting them out.
Got it.
I mean, in the school, that's huge. Sorry. That's, that's a huge issue, being that close to the school. School buses don't stop in the neighborhood. I mean, cars don't stop for school buses in the neighborhood now. Lot of kids in the neighborhood using those streets, Strawbridge Streets, to play on, going to any of the parks. New drivers. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Brian Irvine, followed by Jason Al Holena.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Vice Chairman, Planning Board Commission.
Can you, um...
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Irvine, resident of 2229 Bartholomew's Crossing in the Middle Oaks Plantation Subdivision. First, I'd like to ask you to sit in our shoes as residents of the subdivision and think to yourselves about having a craft brewery on three sides of your home. You're asking a great neighborhood to endure the hours of operations of 6:30 to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week, where I have a young boy at eight years old and a 15-year-old son at home that need to go to bed at a certain time and get up at a certain time. Our property value is a huge concern in the community of Middle Oaks Plantation Subdivision. You can sit here and tell me that anything's better than a vacant, abandoned building that has been abandoned for many years, but I can tell you that it's not. I understand what we purchased, when we purchased our home four years ago, and that the building was vacant at the time, and that there was the ability of something to be built there in the use. As soon as someone comes to our home, if we decide to put our home on purchase on a Saturday afternoon in the middle of July, and comes to an open house and has a craft brewery behind our home with loud noise, patrons, dogs, barking, our property value will greatly diminish, and it also does not allow us to have the vast variety of personnel to come and look at our home, our clients, to buy and purchase our home. It is strictly stricken to one group of individuals, and whoever that may be, I do not know, but it is, I know personally, that I would not buy my, that, my home if that was behind it. They said in the agenda that it is well-scrained with existing mature vegetation along its perimeter. The vegetation is mature. However, it is all weeds. Weeds and overgrown poison ivy that is continuously tearing down our fences that I continuously have to rebuild daily, or yearly, I'm sorry. I've fought with the, I've spoken with Mr. Ned Brooks, the realtor of the property, and the Federal Credit Union for the last four years to have work done in, in that vegetation. Nothing has been done. Lastly, I would like to talk to you about the lighting. Item 11 of the staff notes in regards to the cup brewery states that all light poles shall be no taller than 14 feet. 14 feet with a 20-foot home with a reflection, the lighting will still shine into our bedroom windows, into our living rooms. The loading, the lighting is, is a glare zone and a source of what is referred to as light trespass or light pollution, both of which is recognized by the human eye. In short, the shielding light does not eliminate glare zones causing by such light. We do, we also don't know if the outdoor lighting will be on until 11:00 p.m. or all night long. The glare zone will be, also will be visibly on both floors of our homes and adjacent to the properties. In closing, you can't put this brewery in our neighborhood.
All right, Mr. Irvine, Irvine, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your time.
Jason Al Holena, followed by Barbara Malvin.
Hey, welcome. Please, please state your name for the record.
Jason Al Holena. A craft brewery. What a great idea. A local place, one that serves food. I like the entrepreneurship. Combine that with a dog park and a kennel. Who doesn't love dogs? All of this available 16 and a half hours a day, seven days a week. Just imagine. Imagine what a community would have to gain from having this right at the entrance to their neighborhood, or even better, just on the other side of their fences or right near their pools. Just imagine all the additional traffic. Certainly, they wanted more cars to compete with, crossing London Bridge Road while with their kids on a bike ride, out for a walk or a run. Just imagine the aroma in the air, especially on a hot summer day. There isn't anything like the smell of a dumpster, or a grease vat, or a dog doo. Even dog owners can't wait to get rid of that. Just imagine the music. How enjoyable. Can't you hear the thumping already? Grab your earmuffs. 11:00 p.m. is only hours away. Just imagine all the dogs barking. Oh, to hear them enjoying themselves and exciting your dogs. Did I mention the earmuffs? But it'll end soon. I hear they're only open seven days a week. Just imagine if our fences and landscape were to provide a buffer and screening to insulate us from these new odors and, and noises. They won't, but worry not. The planning commission's staff notes suggest that our existing fences and landscape exceed the screening requirements, though I wonder, have any of you actually personally gone to verify that? But wait, just like a TV commercial, there's more. There's special events, there's live entertainment, there's outdoor container restrooms. Most of us call these outhouses. Can you imagine this unique business concept on a lot with plenty of acreage to fit all of its ambitions, with sufficient room for parking and enough space for dogs to actually run and play, with less impact on the lives of nearby residents? You bet. Now just imagine all this squeezed into our neighborhood. I think not. This would be an unnecessary and avoidable annoyance to the residents of this neighborhood due to the safety, traffic, noise pollution, odors, and disturbances it would cause. Imagine a home going on the market right next door to this. Which of you would be wanting to move in? I'm not sure if you'd get a good deal yet. We have, we don't know what it's going to do to our property values. If I might mention, as a condition, the chain link fence is not sufficient screening. It needs to have slats put in the chain link. Those are available? It seems from the staff notes you've already made your decision. That needs to be a condition.
Hi, we haven't made a decision yet, but thank you. Ms. Ed.
Okay. Any questions?
Any questions for, for the speaker? Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet.
Our final speaker, Barbara Malvin.
I just want to let you know...
Oh, sorry. Could you, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara Malvin.
Thank you.
I have lived in Middle Oaks Plantation for over 30 years. I live on the main street that goes down, and you could hit a baseball to where they're proposing to put a bar. And a brewery is a bar. You can call it what you want, but it's a bar. I have children, I have grandchildren, the whole neighborhood has kids that walk all over those roads. It's, it's ridiculous. I, I can't even believe this city would think to allow something like that to happen. There is a school not a half mile right down the road. There are children that walk on that road, Strawbridge Road, daily, all day long, and in the summer it goes into the night. Okay, that's our prime concern, is our children with a bunch of drunks. That's it. That's what you're asking us to put up with. If I go to sell my home with that there, I make nothing, and I've lived there 30 years. I've lived there 30 years because it is a nice, peaceful little neighborhood where we all look after each other. This is just unimaginable for this city to allow something like that to happen. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Malvin?
I have, I have a question, ma'am. And, and, I'm just hypothetically speaking, what if they just opened up a restaurant? They could leave right now, today, they could open up a restaurant and dog, doggy daycare?
No.
Yes, no, they can by right.
Mm-hmm.
They can do that by right. The only reason they're here right now is because of the make, they want to brew their own beer.
Okay.
So, I mean, they could walk away right now and go do that. So wouldn't you want to have somebody in your neighborhood that you could actually meet with, talk with?
Mm-mm.
You have problems, discuss it?
No, I don't want a doggy daycare in my neighborhood.
They can do it by right.
Well, we have hunk club kennels right across the street.
I understand what you're saying, but it's always nice to have somebody there that you can talk to.
No.
Okay.
No. It's still, it's liquor. Okay?
But they can do it by right.
Well, not if we have something to say about it.
Okay. All right, I'll get, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Burdon, would you like to come up for rebuttal?
First of all, appreciate the, the folks who've come down to speak, both for and against. We kept a lot of our people from speaking, didn't want to just be redundant. Unless I am misrecollecting, because I know this area pretty well, the only traffic that we would generate on Strawbridge Road from the east would be traffic from the neighborhoods coming to our facility. The, the traffic from outside the, the community would obviously use London Bridge Road to get there and not Strawbridge Road. And leaving, I, I wouldn't even know where you could get from this property through the neighborhoods into Castleton, but maybe, maybe you can, but that's quite a interesting configuration to get there.
You can.
The, okay, I, I said I wasn't aware you could, but you might be able to. The, this is, as, as Mr. Weiner pointed out, these are Virginia Beach local residents, three lady business people who have every intention to be a good neighbor. We've agreed to conditions that would not otherwise be able to be put into the application if it were a restaurant serving alcohol from whatever time they start serving alcohol till past the time that's specified in these conditions. The doggy daycare, same thing. They're perfectly legal uses of the property, and this is an opportunity to, to know what's happening and who's happening, who's doing it, and have the ability to communicate with them. Agreed to protect their streets from parking by a condition that I've never seen or agreed to before, but it's perfectly fine because this site, unlike most sites, 3.34 acres of unconditional B2 land is a large piece of property by any measure in the commercial business area. The, this is a restaurant that'll be serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner, hence the early hours. It's not a bar that's open to drink at nine or 10 o'clock in the morning. It's a restaurant. The brewery is simply to brew a, you know, as I said, small batch product that they will sell in the restaurant, on the site. The, the lighting question. The doggy daycare recreation area, which is closed at dark, is, is on the, you can see down in the southwest corner. The Irwins live, they, they have, Mr. Irwin's on about three sides, one little corner, one very small corner of their property, butts the back corner of this property, and we have, we are not going to take up the fence, it's all enclosed by all the vegetation, but we're putting up additional fencing inside of that, and that is solid fencing. The doggy exercise area is closed at, at dusk, it's not going to be lit up. The area of seating is pretty much in the middle of the site, and that's the only, that's, that's outdoor seating. There is indoor seating, and most of the activ, the overwhelming majority of the activities will take place inside as the conditions require. There's no outdoor activity other than people can sit in the picnic area and eat during nice weather. That's it. The rest is all indoors. The conditions specifically, we can't have any amplified music outside. None. So, I mean, all the, I don't know, all the hoopla, but it, it, if this were just a restaurant and a doggy daycare, you would have no say-so over anything, any hours of operation, any of the, and, and the people running it, not that people wouldn't necessarily try to be good neighbors and talk to their neighbors, but these folks, these, these ladies have come in, it's from day one, here's what we want to do, try to engage with, and, and frankly, they have support from other people on the, on the west side, and those are the only houses other than the one home, and the last gentleman who spoke may be the, Jason, may be the owner of that house, I'm not sure, and their house is up next to the building itself. We got rid of, the idea of food trucks in the back corner was somewhat close to their, their residence. I really don't, I don't know how these, these young ladies could do a better job of trying to be, and they will be, good neighbors to the, to the folks in the, in the community, and hopefully it'll be a very successful business. This bar owners, this is not a bar, restaurant owners, you know, do have a duty, responsibility to some degree to their clients, not let them have too much to drink and then drive. We all know that, there, there are potential liabilities if they don't, but this is not being operated as a bar. It's a restaurant, family style for, for families, and all the conditions are, I think, well thought out and supportive of making sure that it is a good neighbor to the homes that were built around an unconditional B2 piece of property to begin with. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Redmond.
I was a little confused. Can you walk me through this site plan, Mr. Burdon?
Sure.
Where's the front of the building? I mean, I, first off, I will say, the building, I like the way that, that you've designed...
The front of the building, the blue facing...
Okay.
London Bridge Road facing north.
Okay.
That's the front of the building. The, and that's the restaurant. The back of the blue part is the brewery, kind of, kind of wraps around, that's where the brewing takes place.
Right.
And then the doggy daycare, which is, our ordinance characterizes as a kennel, that's the brown area there. Heated, air-conditioned, soundproofed. Entrance is from the west. People dropping their dogs off, come in, go around. This, this, the, you see the drive aisle coming down the east side, that's gated, that's only for employees to park and for delivery of materials for the brewery and, and for the, and for the restaurant as well. All deliveries will take place there during, you know, during normal business hours.
I, I think this slide could have been, you know, maybe done a little bit better. What is the area underneath, with those big words that say projector screen? The projector screen is this little red dot. What is that sitting on top of? Does that sit on top of parking? Is it bad?
No, it would be, it...
What is...
No, there's, there's the picnic area and seating for, you know, people who are dining or eating in the picnic area. That's where, that's where the visibility would be to the, to that screen.
I see that.
Okay.
I see the words that say projector screen. What's underneath that? That gray looking, hash mark looking stuff? What is that? Is that the...
Well, that, that, oh, that's, that's an existing impervious surface. That's what this is.
That's overflow...
This is, this part. Oh, that, that's, that is...
It's listed as overflow event parking area.
Exactly. Exactly. That, that is potential, if there, if there ever came to be a need for additional parking for an event or what have you, that's where it could go with city approval, the putting in of, of grass pavers and that kind of thing. It's just, we, going through all the stormwater stuff, we, this, this site, the back of the site was almost entirely impervious over the years because of the, the gravel and some cracked concrete, but that was there when it was both the rental place and they stored vehicles or what have you back there, and then the, the greenhouse had plant material, et cetera. There's a lot of weeds and grass that have grown up through the gravel, and we were showing where all of the impervious on the site is for stormwater purposes. So that's, and that's an area that we've got some impervious, some area that has vegetation through the gravel, and that's just showing where, if it were to become necessary at any point in time, and that by showing it, you know, 10 years from now, whatever... any point in time, and that by showing it, you know, 10 years from now, whatever, we wouldn't have to come back in here and have to modify the conditions.
I appreciate it, I just didn't understand.
But it's not, it's nothing that's going to.
I've been reading underneath all those letters.
Right. Nothing's going to happen there unless, at some point in the future, they need some overflow parking, and they could also try to do it in the old London Bridge Road right away out front with an encroachment, just looking, you know, 10 years down the road, to make darn sure that nobody parks in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Alcaraz, followed by Commissioner Weiner.
Thank you. Mr. Burdon, the brewery is combined as a restaurant and brewery? Is that where the restaurant is?
Yeah, the blue, the restaurant, and then the brewery is, in other words, it'll all be completely segregated inside the building. The whole building's being refurbished and new walls will be put in, et cetera. But that's, the part that's blue is the restaurant and the area where the brewing will take place.
The last speaker said something about liquor. Y'all having liquor there?
I don't, I'm actually, I don't know whether they will, whether the restaurant will serve liquor or not, but a restaurant could serve liquor, and that's by right, but as far, I believe it's wine and beer, but I don't, that's a question I've not ever asked, but I would, but it is a.
So, are they registering as a brewery or are they registering as a restaurant?
Well, they're both.
Well, there's a difference in the alcohol and food ratio. So, it's a complete, it's completely two different things.
Well, it's going to be a restaurant. And I'm unfamiliar with.
They'll serve alcohol.
It's a restaurant that will serve beer and wine, and I don't know if they're serving alcohol or not. They may be.
Because it's just different. They operate differently. That's why we're asking that.
Right. Well, the restaurant is a, that's a separate business from the brewery. The craft brewery, which is brewing the beer that they will, and they may, and I believe they'll sell other beers other than their own as well in the restaurant.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. It's.
You can hang around, be happy to talk to you.
Yeah, you can talk to.
Mr. Burdon. No, sir, no, sir, no, sir, you're done. Question, Mr. Burdon. Excuse me, sir. Sir, excuse us, excuse us. Thank you. Mr. Burdon, the dog exercise area, I noticed there's a fence around the dog exercise area. What, from that fence to the buffer zone, it looks like it's a little bit of distance, different distances at different places. What's an average from?
The average in there would be about 20, on the west side, it's probably closer to 30 feet from the boundary line.
Boundary line, okay.
Yeah. See, we're doing.
It doesn't say on here, I can't tell, that's why I was just asking.
We're doing the fencing on the interior. There is one thing that the Irwins mentioned in their letter that I want to point out. There is that, the chain link fencing that comes down the west side and then across the south side, that's been there for decades. That fencing is not on the property line, it is inside the property. The, apparently, people have been cutting through, because she talked about access to the park. There's no access from this property to the park, but apparently, people cut through now into the park along the back of those properties to the west. We have, we will be more than happy to cut that off by extending fencing to their fence or to anybody else's fence, but that's the only, there's no access and will be no access to the park from this site or to anybody else's property. The one gentleman where they're putting up additional landscaping and we're putting a fence up for them, he would like a gate, which we are providing a gate. But we're not providing access to anybody else's property or to the park.
Any other questions?
I have one. Mr. Burdon, tell me about the hours, because I don't see it and I could have easily missed it, the hours of the kennel and the dog exercise area. I see the hours to the restaurant, which, to me personally, is excessive, at 6:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., seven days a week. I don't know how you can possibly operate a restaurant.
Today, you can't get enough employees to operate a restaurant.
I was about to say, I don't know. I mean.
Well, there are a lot, there are restaurants out there that operate that long and others pre-pandemic, but.
But the kennels specifically.
The kennel is 8:00 a.m. It's condition 7C. 8:00 a.m., well, outdoor, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Indoor, it's to 10 o'clock.
So.
8:00 a.m. to 10.
So, they can be, the dogs can be outside? Is there a limit on how many dogs there are in the kennel and in the exercise area? I mean, typically, when we see them, there's, there are, you know, rules on.
Well, yeah, when you're in the ag district and you have to have a conditional use permit, you don't see them when you're in the B2.
You don't have to have here, but I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, that's a very, it's a very good question. We don't anticipate that there would be, on average, 40, 50 dogs at most. I mean, you could have some day when you have 60 or 70, and to begin with, it may be, you know, 20 or 30.
That's a lot of dogs outside all day long.
They're not outside all day long. No, 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 no. That, all that brown area, that's where they're, that's where they're kept inside. I mean, it depends on the weather, depends on the number of dogs and the people that work there. You take the dogs out to exercise, that's the recreation dog exercise area. They're not out in that area all day long. There may be, you know, 20 or 30 dogs in the exercise area and another 20 inside, and then they switch off. I mean, they're, they're not sitting out there, and again, it's weather, it's not covered, so it's only in nice weather that they get to go out and exercise, otherwise, they're inside, like a typical.
How many dogs does the interior of the kennel hold?
I do not have the ability to give you an answer on that. Well, I can tell you, the one on, the one that is on Virginia Beach Boulevard, just east of Great Neck Road, I understand, and it's not very large, but I understand they have well in excess of $100, 100 dogs in there a day, and they're on a very small piece of property, very small compared to this. But this area has plenty of room for the dogs to exercise, but they're not out there all day long, and they're not out there when the weather's bad. And you, they're inside part of the time and outside part of the time.
I've got a couple of questions. Is anybody else?
I've got a couple of questions. So, the lights, you know, B2 business, you know, it could be built by right, whatever, but describe a little bit more about the lights, because that was of concern, and I would, I would think that that is, would be a concern, you know, with residents there. Do you have any, anything you can convey a little bit more?
Well, the main, the main thing is that the dog exercise area, which is adjoining homes, and it's the, really, the only area that is, has exterior lighting, you know, will not be lit, you know, past, you know, past dark because it can't be used past dark, so there's no reason to spend a lot, I mean, we may have some low, you know, lights, you know, that are just, so if you can see somebody walking through the area, but you're not going to have, you're not going to spend the money on a bunch of, you know, large lights for that, and the lighting ordinance, we can't have any spillover, and there's really no reason to be lighting that up. The other thing, though, you also have, you know, serious, I'm not going to disagree with the idea that it's overgrown, but to some degree, that overgrown area actually protects them in terms of visual, they're worried about lights, they're worried about, you know, seeing people or people seeing them. The areas that will have lighting, but again, typical condition to reduce lighting that's in the staff evaluation, that, the picnic area, and once again, a lot of your lighting's going to be low, you know, ground pedestal lights, not, you know, need stuff that's, you know, high, and we're not playing sports outside, so that's, and then you're going to have the parking area that'll need some lighting as well.
Okay, that's fine. The, and I know you've discussed the fencing a little bit, but let me, let me circle back, because I may not have picked up on it when I was reading through here. The fence to Middle Oaks Plantation Park is a chain link fence as, and it's going to remain that way?
It's, the fence is embedded in all that wild natural area back there, so there's really, it's counterproductive if you're trying to, if you're trying to screen, to go in and wipe that out, to take that fence out and put up a new one there, and that fence is actually, that's here now, is inside the property line, not as much as it is on the west side. What we're proposing to do, we would be fencing in interior with a solid fence that would leave the landscaping or the area that's natural, in its natural state, and not disturb it, because we don't, we don't think that's both from, again, and it's not acknowledging or agreeing that all the trumped up big noise type things, leaving that intact is the best, I think, way to make sure there is the minimum amount of whatever impact from light or noise might ever accrue from this use. So, we're trying not to disturb that area, although we certainly will work with the neighbors and have said so when my clients met with the neighbors, to make sure that they have, you know, fencing, that those that don't, and whatever can be, you know, done to add to the landscaping, to help screen if there's an area that's lacking and put landscaping in, and that's in the report as well.
All right, thank you.
If I may ask, and go back to the brewery slash restaurant, 4,430 square feet, how much of that is the brewery or restaurant? You can zoom back in.
Let me ask, I'm not 100% sure, but what the breakdown is?
Yeah.
Brewery, the brewery will occupy 1,500 square feet.
So, you said just the three barrels?
Three to five barrel.
So, these tanks, maybe one or two?
You're over my head now, George.
I'm just, I'm trying to see how much it's taking in that 4,300 square feet.
Well, 1,500, so that leaves just under 3,000 for the restaurant.
The actual mechanisms and what you're seeing, so it's actual visual to see, it's pretty cool to see, but I was just, I hear everything with everyone else saying by right, I was just seeing how much impact the brewery has on this whole project, and you're saying 1,500.
1,500 square feet.
Thank you.
And we're storing, in that 1,500 feet, unlike some other breweries, we're not storing any materials outside, it's all inside, including the spent hops and marines, too. So, we have to store them there, hopefully, for a very short period of time until some of the agricultural operations will scoop them up.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you all very much.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor for discussion.
I'll start.
Okay.
So, I'm a, I'm a dog owner, I frequent Doggy Day Cares. They are surprisingly quiet from the outside when all the dogs are inside. Based on what I heard today, the issue is that the area is zoned commercial, not what's going to go in the property, and that pretty much anything that would go in there would not, the community would not be a fan of. The brewery, I look at as the same, George bought that property and opened, you know, another, another restaurant there. You're selling alcohol, it's a restaurant. The fact that they're brewing, I think, is a technicality, and I appreciate the residents' concerns, and I hope that what they are afraid of does not come to fruition, but I do intend to support the application.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Redmond.
Well, she's right. I agree with Robin. I think we're way overthinking this. This is about a conditional use permit for a brewing operation that's the size of a Jimmy John's restaurant, okay? 1,500 feet, that's it. The property's 3.34 acres, 145,000 square foot property. 1,500 square feet of it would be used to brew beer. So, that doesn't sound to me like a real big impact. The restaurant part, who cares? It's no different from an Applebee's. I don't care what their hours are, I don't care how many dogs are going to be in the Doggy Day Care. Those things are all by right. It's not zoned commercial. It's zoned B2, which is the least restrictive, most business oriented of the commercial zoning designations, and it has been for decades. So, all this is about is a tiny beer production facility where we wouldn't see it at all. The rest of it is just a restaurant. They'll be serving pancakes, and they'll be serving, you know, eggs benedict, and they'll be serving, you know, croque mousse or whatever they have on their menu, but, you know, turning this into, this seems to be, you know, a mountain out of a molehill kind of application. It is solely about 1,500 feet brewing capacity. If you've ever been near them, they don't smell. They're not noisy. I mean, it's no different than any small kind of business operation, so I don't know why in the world we wouldn't support this. I will say, I've seen a number of these kinds of operations throughout the city and throughout the United States. They are uniformly well-liked and appreciated by the adjacent neighborhoods, including here in Virginia Beach.
Isn't Back Bay one of them?
Back Bay is one, that's, Back Bay is one, that's very well appreciated by the neighborhood. The one that I go to is, since the name went out, Commonwealth. You see people walking there all the time with their dogs, with their strollers, with their babies. I see more grandparents with, you know, pushing a stroller, you know, in the, they're the most family oriented places. The idea that the sky is going to fall because we grant a conditional use permit for 1,500 square feet of brewing is just silly, in my view. It's just not going to happen. I'll bet in the end, more people are going to appreciate this operation in this neighborhood than anybody realizes, and by a very, very wide margin, so I'll certainly support it.
Okay, all right, thanks. Mr. Weiner.
One thing I want to point out, and I think this goes back about five, six, seven years ago, I can't remember how long ago, we had a application, I know everybody remembers Piney Grove Church, with the lights in the parking lot. I have 100% faith in our staff that knows that this is not going to be like, since that happened, we've never had that problem ever again with parking lights, with lights in a parking lot near residential neighborhood. They know what they're doing, LED lights are pointed down, they're not going to be pointed in anybody's backyard anymore. I have 100% confidence in that. Really, and truly, that's the only thing that came about, but I am kind of concerned that people in neighborhoods, people that start up businesses in neighborhoods and people that live in the neighborhoods, go talk to these people. If you have a problem, they're just human beings like you are, okay? Go talk to them. It's not, it's not, they're not going to yell at you and throw you out, they'll sit down and discuss things with you, believe me. I'm sure they want to be there, they want to make money, and they want you to be happy in your neighborhood, so please take time to go talk to them. So, I'm going to support this also.
Mr. Bradley.
You know, this is an area I drive by, you know, two or three times a week. It's an interesting property in the sense of that zoning's there anyway. You know, like I say, it's probably been there forever, and I do remember when it was a tool rental facility and then a garden center. But in the end, I think Mr. Redmond has summarized it appropriately. What is being asked of us as this commission is a 1,500 square foot facility to manufacture beer, which is done in numerous places in our city, so it's been approved by planning commission and city councils before. You know, when we say by right, and I appreciate the residents coming out, by right, they could have done the restaurant and never, I mean, not ask anybody, they got to go through a site plan review and some of those things, but they could have done all these things except the manufacture of the beer. So, you know, but by them kind of putting this all together, it has allowed for the planning staff to work with them, to put some conditions on this that I think will be more amenable to the surrounding community than it would have been without it. So, with that said, I'll be supporting.
Anybody else? Mr. Horsley.
Since everybody's explained this pretty eloquently, I think it's ready for a motion. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Horsley and a second by Ms. Klein.
Thank you, the vote is open. My recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, agenda item number six has been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we can pause for a second.
Sure.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you can go ahead and proceed to the next application.
Okay, Madam Clerk, if you can go ahead and proceed to the next application.
Our next agenda items are agenda items number eight and nine, Dragus Associates, Inc., an application for a conditional rezoning R10 residential district to conditional A24 apartment district on .069 acres, and a modification of proffers on property located at 5,05024 Haygood Road in the Bayside District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, Eddie Verdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Dragus Associates. My clients are here this afternoon on this rec, this application, excuse me, for a modification of conditions and a conditional rezoning, all in the same proffer agreement, to add this 0.69 acre piece into the existing Hawkins Mill condominium that is under construction. I want to point out that this application required 100% approval by all of the existing owners of condominiums on the property, which we have. I want to also point out that the Aragona Civic League, and we know they're very engaged, was not against this or supported this in its original approval, and likewise has no opposition to this addition. This property, as well as the two remaining properties that are not going to be a part of this, were the same family and same folks that the rest of the property was purchased from. The, they, the two remaining, as well as the property that decided they would sell, have always supported this application. It's named, and the community's named after the, their family. So there's, there's no opposition from the Civic League, there's no opposition from any of the owners, and there are no opposition from the two remaining parcels at front on, on Haygood Road. The staff has done an excellent job, Wada did an excellent job of explaining what the application involves. Mr. DeHan's staff have looked through this, recommended approval, I think it's a, you know, it's just, we, we told the folks who own these three, who sold us the rest of the property, we, or my clients did, that they would buy the properties if they chose to sell at any point before we finished the project, and one decided that they did want to. The buffering is the same, and, and one thing I'll point out that wasn't pointed out this morning, there's a 20-foot strip that you can actually see on the, well, if you put back what you had up there. If you look at the, at the right of those two composites, you see a strip of land that's along the boundary between what we're adding and the two pieces that are remaining. That was a flag stem to the rest of the property, so by this piece coming into the development, that other 20 feet is able to be utilized, that we, that the condo association owned. So it's, it's a, it eliminates that 20-foot, you know, strip that was just unusable at the time, too, just, just to make that, that clear, but, so, we, we, obviously, it's a proffered application, so there aren't conditions to agree to, they're in the proffer's behalf. But to answer any questions, if you may have.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Verdon?
Thank you very much.
I'm Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have two speakers, one in person and one virtual. I'm calling the in-person speaker first, Lou Rosario.
Good afternoon, I'm Lou Rosario. Can I point some stuff on this map that we're concerned of from my neighborhood?
Please do.
God.
Wait, there's a corner.
It hasn't been working.
It just doesn't.
I live here.
There.
I've been through residence here, a lot of people that live here that I spoke to, I even made a petition for them to sign, but it was so cold, I couldn't keep on walking, but nobody was aware of this. This entrance here poses a hazard coming from Wesleyan. Speed limit is 45 miles an hour. At the entrance to Southmore, there's a drive-through that you can, you know, come in and slow down, but here, there's nowhere to slow down, and it's a turn. This whole turn here, traffic flows at 35 miles an hour, and there's no entrance to this entrance. They need to widen this area so people can come in, because this is the only entrance to 104 residence. There's no entrance through here, which is Haygood, for 100-plus residents, high school over here, middle school over here, elementary school over here. It's a lot of traffic right now. I made a video and put it online, and it's caratable, so you can get an aerial view of this, because this is going to create more, more, more accidents here and at the light at Southmore than it is anywhere else, because you have six schools in this area. I don't oppose this prettiness, but you need to make another entrance to this facility.
Okay.
You need to fix the entrance to that entrance.
Okay, appreciate, could you come back up to the podium, please? Are there any, are any questions for the, the speaker? So you live on, I do have one. So you live on the back, on the backside, and you've noticed just a lot of traffic. Have you noticed any additional traffic?
All the traffic, oh, there you go, that's, here's your traffic jam here, there's a high school there, there's another school here, here and here. All this gets trafficked, two to four o'clock, this gets packed, you can't even drive. This entrance right here, you eventually, if you don't fix this, you're going to have to put a light there, so now you have a light here, a light here, and a light there. In the mornings, you have accidents here, left and right, because people just fly through here. So you have two or three accidents a week.
Okay, all right, and I think the lights still matter, because he pretty much ended, and we were asking questions, so.
Okay.
Okay, are there any additional questions? Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for the next speaker.
Okay, our final speaker is Linda Baldwin, who is virtual. Ms. Baldwin, if you would wait two to three seconds, and then please state your name and begin your comments.
Hi, my name is Linda Baldwin. My property backs up to Hawkins Mill. We have already had a lot of, basically, fallout from this construction that has been going on for the last two years. They have built that property up several feet above our existing neighborhood. All of their rainwater washes off onto our property. My property in particular has a storm drainage in my backyard, and everything runs off into my property and floods my backyard. I am concerned that adding 16 more units and adding to the density of the population in that area is just going to add to the destruction that is being done to our neighborhood. As far as the last speaker, I really don't think that we need an entrance put into that neighborhood on Haygood Road, because of the schools that are around here, getting out of our neighborhood on Sammy Street is almost impossible at times because of the amount of traffic that flows through here. And I feel like another entrance into that neighborhood is going to pose big problems, and possibly, you know, people being killed in car accidents. We are in a blind curve, as soon as you pull out of my, the end of my street, you're in a blind curve, and you cannot see what's coming. Another entrance into that neighborhood is going to pose more problems than helping anything out.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Baldwin?
I, I do have a question. Where, what's, what street do you live on, or what street does she live on?
I live on Sammy Street, 5124. My property backs up directly to the already-built homes that are, are back there.
Didn't bring my glass. Yeah, sorry, Mr. Sir. There it is. Okay. Okay, interesting, okay, thank you.
No more speaker.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Verdon?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for asking Ms. Baldwin that question, because that was one of the things that I wanted to try to get, would be her address, so my, my clients will get in touch with Ms. Baldwin, or if she's listening, I would request that she please contact the Dragus and Associates so that we can have some conversation regarding her belief that we are draining water onto her property, because that is not supposed to happen, and I'm pretty certain it's not happening, but she may have, she, there may be something we're not aware of. The, as all of you, I believe, or most of you are aware, under our stormwater policies, you know, and this one, you know, was on the old policies, what this little addition will be on the new policy, we, you have to, a lot of property, you have to build up the property, because it's flat, so the water drains internal, not external, so I, I'm fairly certain that if there's an issue, and I'm sure Mr. Dehan and his folks can look into it, we're not, we're not allowed to put water on, onto her property, and I'm pretty confident that we're not, but we, we'll look, look into it. There are some properties on the back of Sammy Street, there's a little cul-de-sac in the front part, she's obviously on Sammy Street, so she's in the back, back part of the abutting property. Excuse me. The, when we originally proposed this community, there, there was a street, I mean, access, street access proposed off of Haygood Road, as well as the one off of Wesleyan, and as we went through the process a few years ago, it was the, the, Ms. Baldwin's position, and I mean, I don't know if she was involved, but the Civic League's position, all the community position at the time, that they did not want the access on Haygood Road, they wanted the only access to be from Wesleyan Drive, and that's what council ultimately approved. District Council representative, you know, that's, that's what he believed was best, based on the community's feelings at the time, so that's, that's the way it's developed. Certainly, the handful of additional units isn't going to change anything as far as that's concerned. If, if traffic engineering, I don't think Rick is, is here at this point, if they, if they have some questions or concerns, then that's something that, you know, obviously, my clients are very good corporate citizens in Virginia Beach and in Hampton Roads, and be happy to, you know, to look at anything that, traffic engineering, but I, I'm pretty certain there isn't going to be anything in that regard. Be happy to answer any questions.
There any questions for, Mr. Verdon?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Do we have any? Anybody want to start off, to lead? Mr. Redmond.
Yeah, this is, so I'm up and down this street four times a week, and lived there, in this neighborhood, most of my life. The, this little corner was always intended to be a part of this project, so this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody, it's not a high-density product at all, if you, if you go over there. It, as I mentioned this morning, this, this applicant does a really good job of landscaping and burming, and ma, and really kind of creating, you know, a sense of place, as opposed to just, you know, dropping some, you know, handful of grass seed and saying they're done, and I think it really benefits, I think that that neighborhood has benefited from it. I can't for the life of me see why this, it should have been on our consent agenda, in my view, so I'm going to be happy to support it, and I'll make a motion, unless anybody else has something else to say.
Anybody else? I've, I've got a few things. So, okay, traffic, you know, I'm, it's a busy area. It is, you know, a gentleman pointed out quite a few activities that, that are in the area, the schools, the, it's a major transportation route, you know, no doubt that, you know, they're, it's busy, and I'm not sure, though, that this application really affects that. Turn lane, if there's no turn lane there, maybe there, there should have been, I, I don't know, but it's, it's just in general, a very, very busy area. In terms of the, the stormwater for Mrs. Baldwin, I think Mr. Verdon mentioned that if she could get in touch with the, the property owner, the Dragus Company, I think they've got a, a strong history of addressing, addressing issues just in general, you know, with their properties, so not necessarily that anything negative, but they, in fact, is very positive, how proactive that, that they've been, and, you know, well-known for some of their, being very proactive with addressing issues with anything that, you know, has arisen with their property. So I would encourage Mrs. Baldwin to, to reach out, out to them, and not relent on that front, but, you know, it seems like it's appropriate, and so I'm, I'm going to support it. Mr. Redmond.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the application.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Redmond, do I have a second?
I have a second.
You have a s-
I'm going to second.
Okay, all right, with that, are there any abstentions?
Yes. I am not, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. To pursue the State Local Government Conflicts of Interest Act, I make the following declaration. I'm executing this written disclosure regarding a planning commission decision on voting, voting items on eight and nine Dragus Associates. I do not have a financial interest in this transaction, but the applicant is a client of mine of Batsholder and Collins, therefore I abstain from voting on items eight and nine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Redmond, and a second by Mr. Horstley.
Thank you, the vote is open. By recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against, with one abstention, agenda items number eight and nine have been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Our next agenda item is agenda item number 12, Anderton Enterprises, an application for a conditional use permit automobile repair garage on property located at 4912 Rutherford Road, Suite 104 in the Bayside District.
Thank you, Ms. Andalup. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, for the record, Eddie Verdon, Virginia Beach Attorney, representing Anderton Enterprises, Inc. The president of the company, Mark Anderton, is in attendance this afternoon. This is a unique application, all the years I've been doing this, and it's all because of where we're going in technology, and I want to thank Michaela, she did a nice job with this write-up and, and the discussion this morning, but it is technically, under our 1973 zoning ordinance, considered to be an auto repair facility. Because we now have these vehicles that have the driver assist that actually take over and can stop your car, drive your car, that's all, you know, technological, and it's way above my pay grade, always will be, since I don't even have a computer, but the, to, to calibrate these and to, you know, when you inspect them and to make sure that they're working properly, and so they don't hit somebody, do something that causes an accident, you have to have a climate-controlled white room with the temperature at a specific, you know, slight range, I understand it, in order to do that work. You cannot do this work in your run-of-the-mill repair garage, you know, it just, you can't, you can't have the interferences and whatever, it's, it's got to be a pretty sterile environment, for lack of a better way to characterize it, not like a hospital sterile, but, so, my clients own two very well-established and successful auto repair, auto care, first landing auto care facilities nearby, and this is where we are going with motor vehicles, so they're getting out in front of it, and they have leased this space as an ancillary auxiliary space that will not be advertised, there won't be any signage, nothing of the sort, and that's in my, in our application, where their technician will bring the vehicle here, put it in the, it's flex space, through the, through the door, and that's where the calibration and work will take place, one car at a time, the public doesn't come there, the, the owner of the car doesn't even know where it's going, and that's where it's done. And we, under our lease, only have two parking spaces, and we don't expect to actually ever use more than maybe one of them. Now, when they're putting the equipment in the building, and think there may be a few cars there to do that work, but as far as the operations concerned, there aren't going to be any people there, other than the person, the technician who comes to do the work, and there may be one other person there, that's it. No cars are stored outside at any point in time, there may be a car left inside overnight if they're in the middle of something, there's a problem, et cetera, but other than that, there's no, no cars parked outside. This, this is not about changing fluids, spark plugs, no brakes, brake pads, tires, windshield, windshield wipers, no- tires, windshield, windshield wipers, no washing of cars, no stereo installation, nothing of the sort. This is simply for those systems that have to have this very controlled, unique environment in order to be able to calibrate and do whatever is necessary to make sure that they are working properly and continue to work properly through, at an inspection period. It's a satellite facility solely, and it will not be advertised. There'll be a sign on the door that says Anderson, Anderton Enterprises with an emergency phone number. That's it. Okay? It's not like Midas muffler down the street. You know, there's not going to be anything like that here. You won't, no one's going to know that it's any different than any other use in that flex space, and probably maybe less, certainly from an outdoor standpoint, impactful. All of the conditions as recommended by staff, by the planning department, are all acceptable to us. Let me say, there are three or four conditions in there about signage. You know, that's fine, stick to minute. But we're telling you, we said from day one, we're not putting up any signage. And we don't control the lights, and we're not putting up any lights. And the number of outdoor parking spaces that we are allocated in our lease is two. And as I said, we don't anticipate ever using them after hours, and most of the time, they won't be used at all, or there might be one car there in a parking space. And that's it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? Mr. Burdon?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have one speaker, Richard De Petrus.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard De Petrus. Nice to meet you all. I live right across the street from the said operation they were going to put in over here. What they're trying to do is they're putting an ADAS system in over there, okay, which is called Advanced Diagnostic Systems for Advanced Driving Cars. This type of system requires specific tooling, specific workers, specific training to be done in that area there. We have a, typically, we're talking about glass repair, 95% of these type of cars, this repair is done in glass repair shops. The sensor is in the windshield. So I don't know why they're going to say they're doing this work without that, because this work is typically done at glass shops. So if they have that much work to do, they don't run a glass shop. They run a automobile repair garage. So I don't know whether they're going to be able to generate this type of work, to fulfill the rent requirements for this place. We feel very strongly that they're just going to use that as an excuse to go in there. If you look at the way they have this worded, we're very concerned about this, to operate auto repair facility for vehicles with advanced driver assistance alignments and calibrations. Not only, so if they pull a car in and it has that, they could do whatever they want on it and say, well, it's got advanced driver assistance programs on it. You could do brake job, you could do whatever you want. And it would meet that requirement. I have a petition from every single neighbor that lives on the street that is 100% against this. Now, if we could guarantee that all they're going to be doing is doing these advanced ADAS systems, then I don't have a problem with that. But the way this is worded, working on vehicles with this, tells me that basically they can pull the car in and say, hey, my car's got ADAS, I'm working on a car with that system, I could do anything I want. It should read only those systems. So we have concerns about that. Also, those type of tests are, there's dynamic and static testing, those type of things. Dynamic is when you actually test-drive the car. So there will be test-driving up and down the street, which my street will not be able to do that because there's no markings. Those type of cars have to have marked road markers to be able to do that. Static would be in the shop only. He's right, you have to have a specialized shop just for that. We're concerned about electric cars with NiCad batteries that are flammable, the building's made out of drywall, and sheet metal. So we're concerned if there's a fire, my house is 30 yards away. I mean, that building has been set up for a warehouse and office space. So we're highly concerned about that also. We have children on the street, and one more quick thing, I'm sure, you know, we have, we had to put up a lot, the neighbors in that area, with existing buildings there, with people running the street, exercise gyms, two men in the truck. It's just been a nightmare. So, two minutes doesn't give me enough time to exactly express what needs to be said, but that's just about it. If we can guarantee they would just do that, you know.
Okay, are there, please stay up there for a second. Are there any questions? Have you got any questions? I've got a few things, yeah. Very well, do you work in the industry, or you?
I've been around cars my whole life, owned a restaurant, a shop in Virginia Beach, actually advocate for this for 14 years. I worked for the Navy as an aircraft machinist.
Can you come up for the mic?
No, I'm sorry, yeah, I worked for the Navy as an aircraft machine. I had a restaurant shop in Virginia Beach for 14 years. I've done a lot of car work, and I'm pretty much up on computer-operated systems. Like I said, that's a very specific type of work, and it does take a very specific type of thing. And according to them, they don't have any training, don't have the systems, they don't have anything to do with. We're afraid that's just an excuse to go in there, like you told me, we need more space.
Okay. One question I, I've got a couple of questions for you. So how do you like the new, because this is fairly new facility?
They just built it, yeah. They just built it. And we certainly didn't expect them to be putting an auto repair service in there. And, you know, if a guy was in there restoring cars or something, I don't have a problem with that. That's not the problem here. The building looks like crap. It's a sheet metal building, and when you're coming down Pleasure House Road, you look at it, it looks terrible. I mean, you know, the building, the sister building next to it was made out of brick, you know, but that's not so much my concern. My concern is if they're going to be doing this type of work, do that only, you know, that's fine. But not use that excuse to slip in the back door and then start doing overflow work from the shop.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
No, wait, sorry, I still have one more question.
I know you talked about traffic being behind it with the kids and stuff, but if they were office warehouses, you're probably going to have more traffic than you would with this type of business.
Well, they'd be test-driving cars.
But they're still, okay, maybe once, twice a day, but you're not going to have people coming in and out from eight to five, working at an office warehouse. So, you know, that's-
Yeah, that's just a small concern. My concern is they're turning into a full-bore automobile repair facility, which means they're not going to do that with the doors shut. There's no air conditioning in the building. You know, the building was never designed for that. I mean, right now, if you go over, they poured the asphalt in the driveway. The asphalt's so bad, you go like this, it's running off in the street into the sewer. So the landlord doesn't really care. So if he just wanted to do that, I don't have a specific problem with setting that computerized system up only. But the way that's worded, working on cars with those type of systems, leads me to believe you can do anything you want to them, as long as they have that system on them. Okay, thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Burdon?
I want to thank Mr. De Picas. I may be mispronouncing his name. I apologize. We have no aversion whatsoever to, it's only for that type of work, only. I'm not sure which condition you want to modify, but that is exactly the case. We're not, my clients run a very successful and well, a good reputation in a part of town that, you know, is not the easiest in terms of shore drive and thorough good roads. So, I mean, they have a very knowledgeable clientele, and people who care about their community and their neighborhood, and certainly that would include Rutherford Road. So we have absolutely no aversion to that. That's exactly what this is. It's for that purpose only. And not anything else. And the other conditions, which you all have all read, I didn't go through and repeat them about no storage of equipment outside, et cetera, et cetera, are all, you know, make sure it will be nothing else but that. But I think that's a fine suggestion. Don't have any problems.
Oh, no. Mr. Burdon, would it be a burden to change the word "with" to "only"?
No.
Okay.
It's not.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, ma'am. I was looking at the condition, trying to figure out-
I don't know where it is.
Well, that was what I was, that's why I didn't want to be glib about it. I'm not sure exactly-
It's not any conditions.
It's not, yeah.
It's up top, it's up top under-
That was-
It's up top here, under background and summary proposal-
Right.
-repair garage with occupied, suite office warehouse building will have a total of 1,710 square feet. Auto repair business will provide light auto repairs, consistent alignments and calibrations on vehicles equipped with the ADAS system. And then after that, it does say there will be no fluid services, oil changes, or tire mountings.
But it's only to do calibrations and alignments on vehicles equipped with advanced driver, drive assistance systems, ADAS systems. And I don't, I don't want to tell staff or you all how to-
By chair, I mean, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Sorry. We can add it to condition number five, where it talks about the operations for the use, where it currently says no motor vehicle repair work shall take place outside of the building. All repair shall take place inside the building with the bay door closed. And repair shall only be for vehicles in need of alignments and calibrations equipped with advanced driver assistance systems.
Great.
Okay, sounds good.
Perfect.
So, modified condition. Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Burdon? Okay, I'm going to open it up for discussion.
Redmond.
Mr. Redmond?
And with that, I would move approval of the application with the change to condition number five, as Mr. Tahan stated, restricting the work only to vehicles with those certain navigations.
I have a second.
So, could I jump in? I think you're still not resolving his issue.
We're not.
Because he's, what he, I'm sorry, he's saying that any vehicle with that system could be worked on and get an oil change in that garage. What he's asking is that the only repair work that's done is on those systems, right?
Okay.
Right.
And so-
So I think you should say the work shall be limited to just repair of-
No.
-advanced, whatever.
I think we've addressed it myself, fine. There's a condition after it or before it that says there're not going to be any fluids, there're not going to be this. I mean, I think this is kind of overworking this as it is, and I think we kind of addressed it, in my view. How big is this suite, Mr. Burdon, that they're going into?
It's 17-
1,700 square feet. Yeah, it's not that, it's not that much you can do in 1,700 feet anyway, for crying out loud. You mean storing tires and brakes and racks and all, you know, putting lifts in the ground and all that stuff? No. So, in any event, I think we're kind of, I think we addressed it, is my view, with that addition in that condition.
Yeah.
I thought the other conditions, frankly, were sufficient, but if this helps, let's do that. And with that, I-
Okay, before you, yeah. And I agree with Mr. Redmond that this is a very low-key operation. They have two parking spaces that they can use that are associated with this building, or with this business. It's, yeah, I, the speaker had a good point that it may turn into more, maybe more expanded operation, but I think with the added condition, repair should only be for, for the ADAS, vehicles with the ADAS system should be sufficient. So the added condition to number five. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12 with amended, modified condition number five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Weiner.
Vote is open. By recorded vote of 10 in favor, zero against, Agenda Item Number 12 has been recommended for approval.
Thank you all very much.
We're doing short-term rentals.
Okay.
One more.
So, got two more?
Two more.
Our next agenda item is Agenda Item Number 17, Suzanne Ling, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 4,005 Atlantic Avenue, Unit 114 in the Beach District. Ms. Ling is a virtual attendant today. So, Ms. Ling, if you would wait two to three seconds, please state your name, and if you are in favor of the conditions as recommended for your application.
Hi, this is Suzanne Ling. I just, you'll have to just bear with me for my inexperience in this matter and obtaining permits, but I just want to make sure that the conditions that I am agreeing to are the most up-to-date and enforced, because I do take this very seriously. And it seems like there's some overlap in the ordinance and confusion as to particularly the section 241.2. And what I'm referencing is these two ordinances, one dated July 13, 2021, and that's ordinance number 3668. And then on September 7, 2021, ordinance number 3674, which seems to contradict and is the latest ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Ling, appreciate your input. So, does anybody on staff, Mr. Tahan?
Thank you, Chairman Wall. Ms. Ling, it's my understanding that you have concerns about the requirement where you're, based on the city council-approved ordinance, that you are limited to only one rental per seven-day period. That is the correspondence I also received that you had sent to Councilmember Tower recently. Based on the ordinance, you are in the Oceanfront Resort Short-Term Rental Overlay District, which does limit and have that limitation of one rental per seven-day period. That same condition was the condition that was imposed by city council on 95% of the short-term rentals that came through the process since 2019. So although it was codified and written down, regardless of what time you would have applied for it, that condition would have been either imposed on you by the city council at their direction to staff or through the current ordinance. If you go ahead and pause two to three seconds, then you can go ahead and reply to that.
Okay, but the current ordinance is dated September 7, 2021, which allows two contracts per seven days.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Burdon, please.
No, ma'am. What code section applies to you is section 2303 of the zoning ordinance. I wouldn't necessarily refer to just the individual ordinance you're reading. It does provide a lack of context to the regulations that are in place. Again, just to reiterate, you are in a short-term rental overlay district, which has the requirements that are separate from 241.2. It specifically calls out that there are certain sections of section 241.2 that are overridden by those requirements in section 2303. And so, and it is, it does limit that you have one rental per seven-day period.
The, what is, the 3674 is amending 24.2, and that was the latest ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals. So why wouldn't we go with that when there's nothing referring to 2303 in this ordinance, 3674 dated in September?
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Ma'am, again, it's, I think you're only looking at one portion of the ordinances that were adopted by city council. Again, section 2303 is what applies to your property. Section 241.2 does not apply to your property. Your property is in a short-term rental overlay district, which then points you to section 2303 of the zoning ordinance, which then says you are only permitted to have one rental per seven-day period. So reading the, like I said, reading the ordinance individually is a little bit out of context, not looking at what your zoning classification is.
Okay. Just one other question. So when you reference the ordinance and looking at the application process, 24.2, it's also citing 3674, and I guess it's just very, very confusing to people new to this process to have all of these different pieces but still contradicting each other. I'm just having a hard time understanding that. Why wouldn't I, when you look at, you know, the application process, 24.1, 241.2, and then referencing 3674 in the latest document online, and then that is the latest ordinance to go along with it? I just, can you- I just, uh, can you maybe shed a little bit more light on this a little bit more? And then I do have some other remarks on, you know, the, I don't know if you're familiar with the actual property and, um, the units that are already short-term rentals, and it's not like a, you know, a vacation home in a residential area, it's a condo unit with several short-term units already in the building, and, you know, we have hotels on, all around us, and building more. So, I think this is a little bit, in addition to the ordinance issue, a unique situation, and also as a studio, so people are not normally going to spend more than three or four days, and that's why I would like to request more than, just up to two rental contracts for seven days.
Jack Wall, I'm the chairman. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ling, this is, uh, Jack Wall, um, with the chairman of the planning commission. So we, you know, we appreciate your input, and, and we understand that, you know, I, I don't have the ordinance, you know, um, you know, in front of me, or you can really bounce that off, but we'll, we'll take a look at that. Um, Mr. Tahan has stated that it's, um, you know, you may be taking something out of context, and so it's, you know, we're, we're prepared to, um, to approve your application with, you know, one rental, um, you know, per seven-day, seven-day period, you know, as it, as it stands, because that's just the standard conditions that have been, um, if the past, past few years, and now it's, it is in the ordinance, um, and, um, in terms of your specific location, Oceans Two, you know, we've had numerous applications come before us, and, you know, all of those of, of late, all the ones within, I believe the past two years, it's been one rental per seven-day period. Um, and so there's, there's nothing, you know, out of the ordinary, unfair with that, or with any, um, anything with Oceans, Oceans Two. So we're, we're hoping that you're, um, you're in agreement with this, with the condition, condition number 13, um, and, you know, that's, we're going to discuss it a little bit further, but, hoping that this, um, this, this matter can be, you know, be resolved.
From my understanding, um...
Ms. Ling, I'm sorry, your comments got cut off, please, uh, and please pause, please pause two to three seconds and can, and start your comments over again.
Sorry about that. Um, from my understanding, um, Randy Taubor and Jerry Lynn Taubor, they have just received last summer, and they're, all of the, uh, current short-term, or I guess, uh, at least three, they own four units, they all have two rentals per seven days.
Uh, Ms. Ling, I can't speak on that, I don't, if, you know, I, I find that very un- unlikely.
No, no.
Oh, it is true.
Yeah.
As I noted, it was...
It was before the ordinance changed.
Uh, before the ordinance changed, okay, so that was before the ordinance changed.
And as noted in 95, when I said a 95%, remember the, there was a long debate with the planning commission and the city council, of the concern of how many rentals per week before that condition was added.
Okay.
So, I, I will say that there, there are probably some applicants that do have two days in this area, but as noted by city council's previous actions, they've directed us and to, uh, maintain the one rental per week, uh, in this, in the overlay district.
Okay.
Yes. Mrs. Ling, I, um, I have a question for you. Personally, I'm, I am ready to move forward with an approval on your application for what, item 13, or, or, condition 13 states, one rental per, um, seven-day period. Are you in agreement with that, to move forward?
Um, yes, I guess I don't really have another choice.
You can, you can work, go up to city council and, um, work and talk with them about this, but to get this through us to city council, um, I'm 90% sure that's what we're going to agree on.
Okay, I'm going, I'm going to close it for questions, and just going to, um, open it up for discussion. But before I do that, I just want to make a note that, um, for the record, Mr. Redden is, um, has left the, the planning commission.
I'm noted, thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to open it up for discussion. Anybody?
Uh-uh. Make a motion.
Anybody like, make a motion.
To, um, go ahead and approve, what's this application, um, item number 17.
I'll second.
All right, we have a, um, motion by Ms. Oliver and a second by Ms. Klein.
Vote is open. I recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against. Agenda item number 17 has been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our last agenda item is agenda item number 18, James D. White, revocable living trust, an application for a conditional use permit, short-term rental on property located at 407 18th Street, Unit A in the Beach District. Mr. White is virtual. Mr. White, if you would pause for two to three seconds, and then state your name, and if you are in agreement with the conditions as applied to your application.
Jim White, yes, I am.
Okay, so, oh, this is you. Okay, um, does anybody have any questions, um, for Mr. White?
I do. If he, may he stay on while I speak to ask him questions?
Okay.
He's watching us on TV, this...
Mr. Chairman, I think you just need to let them know that Mr. Al... Hold on, sorry, we're trying to cue the TV crew to unmute us, so you can...
I don't know, I don't quite understand it either.
It causes feedbacks, our head.
It's just in case you drop the bad word.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there could be some.
Oh, is that what it is? For Hannity?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Alcaraz, if you can go ahead.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to talk with the applicant, or, or he here, what my concerns were. I did receive, uh, a call, two calls on the same, uh, it was an attorney, uh, representing three entities, those entities own nine properties adjacent to this property. Uh, their concern was the parking. Um, I understand it was, uh, approved before, but what I want to do is just make it, uh, put it on the record and ask the, uh, planning director the process, or what it takes if, um, an applicant is, is given conditions, and he doesn't make, or, or continue to, to monitor those conditions that they're met, uh, when he has, um, when he has guests. So if, for, for instance, if the parking isn't utilized, as he says, at, uh, 335 Virginia Beach Boulevard, numbers two and three parking, and it's, uh, abused by the words of the neighbors, where does that leave, um, the, the planning director as far as any process to void the, you know, the conditional use permit?
Thank you, Mr. Alcaraz. So, if, if applicant or if a, if a operator has the conditional use permit for a short-term rental, and they choose not to operate, uh, in accordance with their conditional use permit, uh, staff can bring forward to city council, I believe, and I'm trying to find the timing here, but I believe it, so then I have to provide notification, uh, within 15 days or something of that timeframe, uh, to the applicant, that will bring them forward for revocation, and they'll have to explain to the city council why they choose not to follow their conditions. Uh, of course, in order to do that, we would have to have sufficient evidence showing that they are not operating appropriately, uh, so that council can make that decision moving forward, but it can be revoked. Um, as a former mentor of mine, it can be revoked any given Tuesday, so.
All right. Well, as long as Mr. White understands that, I, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, application.
Is he going to talk?
All right, um, I've got, anybody else have any? Okay, I've got a motion, uh, by Mr. Alcaraz, do I have a second?
Don't we want to hear from Mr. White?
Oh, sorry, oh, okay.
If he wants to agree to that?
Yeah, my apologies. Um, Mr. White, um, do you have, do you have any comment on that?
Um, this is our, uh, third Airbnb, and, um, and we are definitely under, understand all the policies and everything that goes into this, and we 100% are going to make sure their guests are parking in the right places, and, uh, following the guidelines that are presented by the city.
Yep. Ms. Oliver?
Um, Mr. White, I just want to make sure you understand, because it's so hard virtually, um, to, to understand what we're, what we're saying, but that you understand that Mr. Alcaraz has gotten several phone calls on your, um, short-term rental as far as parking, the, the back unit being blocked in from the front unit. And so that just, um, needs to be addressed, so that you, you, you don't lose your conditional use permit.
Yes, absolutely. Um, we're fully aware of that, and, um, that was sent in, and I definitely understand.
Okay, um, got a motion by Mr. Alcaraz.
A second.
Second by Ms. Oliver.
Vote is open. I recorded vote of nine in favor, zero against. Agenda item number 18 has been recommended for approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, are, is there anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, we're leaving tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you for, uh, participating today in, uh, the planning commission hearing. Meeting is adjourned.